I'd like to open the meeting, work session, Monday, October 28th, 2013. Tonight, just to inform you and the public, we have three meetings. We have a work session, which is taking place now. We have a regular meeting that must start at 6:00, due to public hearings within that curriculum. So be sure that you know that we have to finish and we'd have to continue this at a later time tonight.
Could we take a little break between this and the 6:00?
Yeah, then that's so we have a special meeting that will be immediately following the regular meeting, and that's when we'll call the meeting and then we'll call a break, all right, so that you will have that. Okay? All of you understand? Okay, we're all around the table except Councilwoman Lortano, and she's on her way. She had a case, so she couldn't get away right away. So we're going to go ahead and start the presentation. Sheri has certainly been briefed on this before during the time that we had it on the planning part. So we will receive a status update on the FY 1316 City Strategic Action Plan. Kim Bradford, who is our Assistant to the City Manager, 2%. Kim?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, very excited to be here this evening to give you a progress report on our city strategic action plan. First of all, I want to really thank all our directors and department staff who have not only been doing all the activity that you're going to hear about this evening, but also helped facilitate this update for you. So thank you for that. As you mentioned, we have an hour. We did prepare a full update in the plan, which was included in your council packet and is also posted online for public viewing also. That's very detailed on every action item. There are highlights in the presentation this evening. I will go through that. Please feel free to ask any questions, or if there's something in the plan that maybe I didn't cover in the presentation that you want to ask about or make a comment, please feel free to do so. I just wanted to start by briefly reviewing our performance management program and where does this city strategic action plan fit in the whole grand scheme of things. As you'll see with the citizens in the council at the top, you really kind of work with the citizens and set the policy vision for our city. And then we had a presentation last week on the city's general plan, which is in the process of being updated right now, which is really a lot more than just our land use plan. It really sets out a long-term vision for the city in many different areas that you'll see dovetail really nicely into our strategic focus areas in our plan. So a good way to think about this plan is almost like an implementation piece of that general plan, so taking those long-term, broad goals and focusing on some action items within a three-year period that really advance that. We have our four focus areas, the fiscal and resource management, economic vitality, sense of community, and quality of life, that really, again, dovetail with the general strategic areas that are in the general plan. And as the general plan is adopted and voted on by the public, we will continue to make sure that correlation is maintained, to really make sure those visionary elements are being So very briefly, this plan is a collaborative effort both on the part of the council and the staff. It was adopted in April after much work that began really back in June of 2011, and again, focuses on a three-year period of action items as far as driving priorities that the departments then take and incorporate into their plans, and also individual employee performance objectives. This past year, as part of our budget process, we also integrated linking our strategic focus areas into the budget conversation. So as you heard about supplementals for budget requests and programs, whether new or expansion, really linking those as to how they supported those four strategic focus areas. So again, making sure we're all staying on the same page. And as I mentioned, this is kind of a status update as far as what has been taking place since the document was adopted by council in April. So really briefly, the vision for the city is something that was developed by the council and really set the stage for the development of this entire plan. The vision reads that the city of Goodyear will be a great place to live, work, and raise a family, will be a city with healthy lifestyles and a commitment to the environment, and a growing community that provides quality opportunities and lifestyles. And that's kind of really our sense of community, quality of life aspect of the vision statement. And then the last piece of the vision statement is really focusing on some of those economic development pieces that really provide that sustainable method for providing those elements. We will be known as a destination place for regional shopping, a destination for higher education designed for workforce needs, a place for diverse job opportunities and an inventory of industries, an incubator for entrepreneurs, and a hub of arts and culture in the West Valley. And on the bottom of this slide, you'll see those four focus areas that I mentioned a little while ago that really kind of organize our plan and the action items and goals that we'll go through in a minute to really kind of conceptualize how we're moving the city towards achieving this vision. So our first focus area is fiscal and resource management. Our purpose statement here is that we will focus on implementing innovative and responsible policies and business practices to effectively manage our fiscal and human resources. And this is done in an effort to provide a stable fiscal environment that's transparent, it maintains an outstanding quality of life for our citizens, and also implements efficient business practices to ensure exceptional customer service. We have five different goals in this area. We have demonstrating fiscal responsibility through establishing financial policies and budgeting practices, reducing the cost of government through implementing innovations and operational efficiencies, implementing a human capital plan that allows the city to proactively plan for, maximize, and retain our top human resources talent, implementing reputable and innovative technology initiatives that support our business processes, and also encourage private business investment in the community, and creating and pursuing opportunities for collaboration and regional partnerships to maximize our resources.
Joe?
Just quick on that financial stability, where does financially sound policies, where would that fit into this?
That's also in this. In fact, the exact wording for our goal is establishing sound financial policies and budgeting practices. So that includes all our budget and financial policies that are adopted as part of the budget book. So I'll get into a little bit of the action items that are under fiscal and resource management and kind of highlighting some of those, as I mentioned. If I don't highlight something that you have a question on, please feel free to-
I just want you to define for the public some of these ICMA.
I will do that, yes. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. So the first area to highlight is our performance measurement program. We've made significant strides in that over the past several months. We have enrolled in the Center for Performance Management 101 program, which is the CPM 101, and that is actually a national program that's run through the International City County Managers Association, and that's the ICMA program. And they have researched and established best practice measures that many cities across the country use to measure their performance in a variety of different areas. We are actually, you'll see under the upcoming steps, we're finalizing our data submission for our second year. And this is where you've also heard us working with a local valley benchmarking group to do some local comparison, so honing in on a local level rather than just a national level. We also developed city-specific measures as an enhancement to those national standards to measure items that were important to us as a city, working with our departments to identify those data points and combine those into our city stat book, which the council received in July 1st. That's when we implemented it, and it was also adopted as part of our budget book. So we've formalized that, we've streamlined collection of data, and are now in our first quarter of collecting information.
Excuse me a moment. Sheri Lortano, Councilwoman, has just joined us.
So what you'll see moving forward in the effort of performance measures is we are implementing a city stat review process. And if you're familiar with the Police Department CompStat process, it's very similar to that where we look at data that we've collected for our measures and delve into what is the data telling us? Is it something that we need to look into more? Are our actions supporting our performance standards? Do we need to make adjustments? And so we will be piloting that actually in the next month, and then also planning a report back to council. So you'll see what the data evaluation points are showing us and what we're doing to react to that. So very exciting. The priority-based budgeting initiative has been launched. Council has received a couple of different work sessions on that, and we're very excited. It's kind of a different lens, is how the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting puts it, to look at our budget. So rather than just talking about dollars and line items, it puts the dollars in context of how much it costs to run a program, and then also helps us evaluate those and how they support your strategic priorities. So really helping us to have meaningful conversations as part of the budget process of how we're allocating our resources. So we've made significant progress. We finalized our result maps and our attributes that we're going to be scoring our programs against. We have trained all the staff on the costing allocation, and they're in the midst of completing that right now, and we have our scoring training coming up this week. So a lot of activity in support of that in an effort to have a work session with council in January to really talk about what does that, what do those results look like, where our programs are falling in terms of quartiles, to help us have that discussion when we talk about budget for next year. We've also implemented our brand-new employee performance appraisal tool. It's a very exciting and different approach than we've had over the years. We've changed to a meets-does-not-meet criteria, and the really unique element that we've incorporated as a result of this is there are three different components to that new tool. We have some citywide standards that were established that really focus on customer service, and every employee evaluation has those, so making sure we're focused on that no matter what our jobs are. And then also some technical competencies that really relate back to the job description. So every employee has clear expectations as to technically what they're expected to do and whether or not they're meeting those standards. And then the third piece of that is actual performance objectives. So you may see things in here that we're moving forward, such as developing a transportation master plan. That may be an objective in somebody's actual performance appraisal. So we had all employees trained on that. We have implemented that as of July 1st, and every employee received a performance conversation with their supervisor to kind of make sure everybody's moving forward with the same set of expectations. We are implementing a new electronic tool that will be used to complete these evaluations. We've had IT and our HR departments working very hard on this and getting ready to roll that out in November. And all employees will be evaluated according to this new performance tool in December. So we have that coming up. The other piece to that, as I mentioned, we're evaluating on a meets-does-not-meet criteria right now, and one of the pieces to that is we will be developing an exceptional employee program. One of the things when we were embarking on this initiative was how do we really recognize those true high performers in the organization, and it's not just the 66% that are rated exceptional. Let's really hone in on those outstanding performers in a way to recognize them. So you'll see that coming forward next year also. Next, we have some operational enhancements and efficiencies that have been completed over the last few months. We have a citywide safety committee that's made up of representatives from many of our operational departments, and they've done some amazing work, and they've actually written and documented and trained on 117 standard operating procedures and job hazard analysis. It's amazing to see the amount of work that's been done, but also the method in which it's been completed. All the employees that are impacted and involved in performing these procedures have been engaged in developing those documents, so really engaged in how they're actually getting their work done and how to get it done safely. Our police department also completed 180 policy review and updates, and this is in support of their accreditation efforts, which we'll talk about in a little bit. But they've not only completed those, but all department staff have been trained, and they also review those on an ongoing basis through daily briefings. So that's an ongoing effort, but those have been completed in the last few months. We have a new department equipment sharing process that is being implemented right now. We've established the technology to support that and are working out the procedures that will support it. But it's really exciting. What it does is it will allow departments to share equipment, whether it's bucket trucks or backhoes or smaller equipment, so we can reduce duplicate purchases and then also the operations and maintenance costs associated with that. So as I said, that mechanism is in place, and we're developing procedures on that right now. We have expanded use of our SharePoint system, which is a document sharing system that's web-based, that really allows departments to share information, whether it's safety, HR information. We have our Innovation Academy that's using it to collaborate on documents. So we're really seeing expanded use of that. And then also, we have the Innovation Academy that we were selected to participate in and that we have a team of 14 employees that are really going through some training on how to identify innovative initiatives, how to integrate that into their work teams, take information back. And we'll also be doing a pilot project to kind of show the application of those concepts that the team is learning, and really kind of look at how we can sustain that. So we are continually integrating a continuous improvement process in our daily work. One other item to note under this is we have our new fleet facility that's going to be opening next year. That's under construction, and that's also going to enhance our fleet maintenance operations. So we're very excited to have that coming online.
I have a quick question.
Ryan?
Thank you. I wrote it down, and I think it's, I'm either confusing something or I just need clarification. And it's not listed on here, but I thought about it as we were doing some things, going through this. We are recommissioning the SAT site, correct?
Yes.
But didn't we decommission it within the last two years?
Yes.
So could, I get a better understanding as to why? It looks like it's a good thing that we're recommissioning it, but I don't understand now why we decommission it and the cost that it was when we did that. So this, I don't know that it fits right here, but I know it came to my mind as I was going through these.
Yes, and it probably came to your mind because I do have that under one of these slides. I'm not sure which one.
Okay, maybe.
So I'll go into that, but some of the questions about cost, you can certainly follow up on it. I don't have that level of detail, but I can explain a little bit about what we're doing with that. So I will.
That's just, it's one of those things that's, oh, it's a good thing we decommissioned it. Now it's a good thing we're recommissioning it, and so I, you know, just want to understand.
I will cover that, thank you.
Thank you.
We have our Enterprise Resource Planning Project that is in full swing. That is our new system that will be replacing our HTE program that we have in place right now. We have procured a consultant to help us with the citywide business analysis, and they have been extremely busy over the summer engaging with staff through a citywide survey, collecting information about how we currently use the system, what are some gaps in the system right now, and what do we project we might need it to support in the future. So they did that, and then also conducted some in-depth interviews with our core users to really get a sense of what is it that the city's looking for in a new system. We have right now a request for information that's out on the street, and it will be due this week. And what that's going to do is really kind of tell us what is out there that might fit our needs, and really let us hone in on when we do a request for proposal next year, identifying what our specific needs are and prioritizing. So a lot of progress on that over this past summer, and even more to come as we get into 2014. We also have a plan review enhancement process that's underway, and there's a couple of different things going on in an effort to streamline that. We have the Information Technology Department, Engineering, and Development Services working together to not only identify areas in the process that can be enhanced to make it a better experience for our customers, but also the integration of electronic plan review, which engineering has been using for the past few years, and expanding that to our Development Services Department. So a couple of different things there. So we will see project docs, which is the technology piece implemented in the next, boy, month or so, and then also the results of that process improvement, so we can make sure that we're implementing those as we enhance the technology piece.
That's a lot of good work.
And then the last slide that I'll cover in the fiscal and resource management area is, I'll start with the healthcare cost mitigation strategies. One of the areas that we were really focusing on is what can we do to help minimize some of those cost impacts that we see that we know we're faced with every year in the rising cost of healthcare. So we marketed our health insurance this past year. As you know, we are under contract with Cigna, who was our previous provider, but we have a new renegotiated contract, which really helped us do a couple of things. First of all, we were able to bring our wellness clinic that we've established as a primary care provider, which helps us streamline our processes, and then also allows our employees to go direct to the wellness clinic and get referrals out to specialists. And then we also were able to negotiate additional funding in support of our wellness programs from Cigna. We've had some contributions from them each year in support of our wellness initiatives at prevention to try and catch things early and reduce costs. And as a result of that, we are looking at expanding our wellness clinic hours this fall. So we'll see that coming up.
Joe?
What are the timelines we'll be looking at, potential options, costs that we may have in the plan for the next coming year?
For the next year?
Are we still looking around January to see what possibly some options we may have as we move forward in healthcare?
Right, yes. As we kick off the budget process, we'll look at our loss ratios as we do every year with Cigna, and then we'll get some information from them on what they think our premium increases will be next year, and then enter into that negotiation process. So that'll be early next year.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead, Joe.
Well, I'm hoping sometime around January. I know last year was a little late in the process, so one of my concerns is maybe some of the options that the employees have right now, and in my view, they're kind of limited. And I'm hoping that as we kind of move that process forward, we'll have some other potential options and costs associated, especially when it comes to picking one's own doctor type of thing. So I like the fact if we do get it started in January, at least we have that discussion. So if we want to make some changes or some suggestions as a council, we'll have time to do that, you know, as opposed to, you know, down the road.
Ryan?
Yes, and Councilmember Pizzillo, to that point, we do have the broker on board now. There will be schedules that are, as we work our way through this. So as that gets finalized, as far as the timelines and the deadlines and the approaches, we will definitely get that to council. We're excited about having the broker on board. It gives us, we think, an opportunity to really take a hard look at several areas. So, but right now, it's premature to speculate, but we will be getting in front of council first with a schedule, a calendar of events, and that'll give you a better idea of when we'll be in front of you with some of these items for policy consideration.
So for the public information, all of this discussion nationally on the new care program that's being launched, does that affect the city employees in any way?
I'm going to say that the general answer is no because of the insurance, type of insurance that we provide, the level, I should say. So generally, no. If employees opt out, then it may be considered. I'm looking back at Wynette for this one.
Yeah, can somebody come forward and just speak to this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because I know we're going to get questions on that because we're getting already, you know, conversation out in our communities about not being able to use their own doctor, and now promises have been broken. So if you can enlighten us on this, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, good evening. With regard to that question, we don't anticipate any impact at all to our employees. Our current insurance fits the, beyond the minimum qualifications that they're requiring changes for. So there are no anticipated changes, no changes to our plan going forward. So our next stage of any kind of change would be in the process of renegotiating our contract.
So you don't think even cost? Because when people go outside, I just know what I've been hearing from one of my doctors and that who may not see me anymore. In fact, I have to tell you, that's in the, I may have to figure out something else just because of the cost, and he's not going to accept certain insurances and things, so.
Although the health exchange is available to anyone that wants to go out on the open market, our plans are competitively priced. We won't experience any changes. Again, the only change that we will be experiencing would be within the context of a new contract negotiation. So no changes with regard to what we currently have.
Joe?
Just a follow-up question. You had mentioned that anybody can go out there on the exchanges. Does that mean anybody in a group plan, an individual employee, if they so choose, can go price their own out there and actually pull out of our plan if they feel that this plan is better suited for them?
They certainly could, and based on our experience, I'm not sure that they'll find the same level of coverage that we offer at the same price. We do offer a subsidy or replacement for those that drop our plan. So the impact to the city would actually be savings. If someone were to drop our plan, we would be paying less for that individual than we would otherwise. However, our recommendation to employees is to look very closely at the plans and compare and work with human resources to evaluate whether or not they meet the same conditions and same levels of coverage.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kim.
Thank you, Mayor. And next, we'll just highlight a couple of efficiencies that we've been implementing in regards to utilizing our human resources that we have. We implemented a new market-driven pay structure for our non-sworn staff, so a significant difference from the old pay step scale that we had, which mandated certain levels of pay increases that had to be funded. And what this has done is a couple of things. It gives the council and the staff some flexibility, so it's not an all or nothing. You either fund the raises at this level or nothing. So it gives you some flexibility. And then it also allows the staff to look at allocating those increases according to the quartile that employees fall into on their individual pay ranges. And the objective there is to move employees on the lower end of the pay scale up to market level sooner, helping with our employee retention efforts, so reducing our turnover. So we implemented that in July. We've established a couple partnerships with ASU, both for a leader-level training program that's going to be implemented next year, and also development of a data-driven attrition model, which is kind of a fancy way of seeing, looking out at our human resources right now and seeing where we might be experiencing some turnover to help with our succession planning efforts. So working with them on refining that model and then also populating it with our data. And that's a group of West Valley human resource directors that have actually been participating in that, so very exciting. And then we also implemented Telestaff, which is a technology initiative that is being used in our fire department to help manage and organize our constant staffing requirements. As you can imagine, with the number of staff and our constant staffing requirements and the shifts, it takes quite a bit of complex management to ensure we have the appropriate coverage, look at the impacts to overtime, look at coverage for trainings, vacations, things like that. And it was a pretty cumbersome process to do that manually, so Telestaff has really helped us streamline that process. And then lastly, this is where we'll talk a little bit about some of those environmental strategies that we're looking at, and this gets into the SAT site area. And actually, this whole area really has been focused on development of our water resources and our portfolio. So you'll see a lot of items highlighted here that really support that. I see proactive answering questions. So we have been focusing on our Central Arizona Project water. We've had some discussions with council over the past few months regarding applying for additional allocation of that water, investing in our CIP, in the infrastructure that would be needed to bring that water to the city, and then also negotiating treatment capacity for that water with the objective being to increase our utilization of that surface water. We received a grant for some environmentally conscious way to dispose of our brine. We're doing a pilot project that Mark presented to the council just a couple months ago. The completion of our corugate plant is imminent. We recommissioned the SAT site, and this is the SAT site that is at the former city center, or the 40-acre city center site, which was decommissioned a couple years ago when we were proceeding with construction of city hall. What happens is we had to cease the recharge activity to make sure that the soil was firm and we could construct our city hall and public facilities at that site. So we decommissioned it, and then, of course, we postponed construction of those facilities. And at that time, then, we were not recharging. We had a presentation from Mark on our long-term solution, which is the Vado Zone Project. So that's our long-term recharge solution, and in the interim, identified an opportunity to recommission the SAT site. And what that allows us to do is, starting in January, we can initiate that recharge- And what that allows us to do is, starting in January, we can initiate that recharge, not waiting for that two years for the Vado Zone to be completed, and saving us about a half a million dollars a year, I believe, in the recharge credits. So, a million, a million. So, good thing Mark's here. So I don't know if that answered your question, Councilmember Osborne, as far as, you know, kind of the history and why we ended up recommissioning that site.
Well, I appreciate that. I knew it had something to do with the city center, and I just wasn't remembering completely as to why it was needed to decommission it at the time. And that's what I was trying to remember.
And just to finish up on that, Councilmember Osborne, we had to dry up the basins so they could really, I'm going to say, they had to be dried up for us to proceed with starting to build foundations, roads, those vertical projects within the city center. So the dry up had to be for a defined period of time, I want to say was close to a year. So we did that in advance of the city center going forward. When that project stalled, then at that point, we did not start recharging again until just now. But we could not go vertical without drying up those beds first.
That wasn't anything, we didn't have any partnership with Langford on that, was it? It was just all us, or was there Langford?
That was all us. We were doing the dry up. We did have to dry that up, and they came in and their engineers, engineering team had to look at that and do soil samples, et cetera, as part of that project, because we took that quite a ways and were pretty much ready to construct. So yes, there was, other than the engineering side of the house and the design side of the house, that was theirs fee that we paid for, but the dry up was really ours.
Joe?
Just as a follow-up, I think your answer was in what you said, but if for some reason something happened in which we could move forward on that property, we would have to wait at least a year to do that, because you would have to decommission again and dry those beds out. Is that correct?
Go ahead and take that.
Sure. Mayor, Lord, members of the council, we have an agreement with Langford for a 12-month notification. So when they want to move forward with the project, they would get, we'd give a 12-month period for us to go ahead and dry up the basin again, the basins.
But if, for some reason, a university was to come, be a year before they would break ground anyway, so.
Same thing, right? That pertained the same thing, because they were looking at the building right there on the 40-acre complex.
Yeah, a little bit of history on that. The university campus site itself, the 100 Acres, is not impacted by this at all. But back then, when Arizona State University was looking at locating on the 40 acres, yes, it would have, they would have been impacted by this and would have had to dry up the beds again to reactivate. But the university recruitment activities we're working on are not impacted.
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kim.
So moving on to economic vitality, the purpose statement here is that we will seek diverse, high-quality development that's really going to focus on bringing local jobs and also a strategic pursuit of identified industries that are important to us, and really will hone in on that as a result of our economic development strategic plan, which we'll talk about in a minute. But really focusing on bringing business investment in the community that provides long-term sustainability and jobs for people to stay here and work. There are six goals in this area: streamlining the city's development services to efficiently support our local economic development, establishing long-range planning, which we'll talk about. We have a number of those initiatives underway, and I'll go through the progress on those in a minute. Our strategic investment in infrastructure, economic development to grow jobs, and also foster demand for local services, so not only the big locates, but also the residual demand for services that support their efforts. Business retention and engagement, and also focusing on tourism, not only for Goodyear, but also the West Valley. So starting with the major planning initiatives, as I mentioned, we have our economic development strategic plan that's underway, focused future, and that technical advisory committee has been meeting over the summer, and it's made up of a diverse group of business leaders from the community. And we'll be having a work session with council later this year, so you can hear the updates on that. We have had significant progress on our three major plans: the general plan, the transportation master plan, and our parks master plan, which is not only committee work to develop those plans, but also significant citizen engagement to get feedback and input from the community. Upcoming, we have design guidelines and sign ordinance that we are engaging a consultant, and the council will receive a presentation in December to kind of go through what that process is and how we're going to be bringing that back to council. And then the Urban Land Institute has selected Goodyear to participate in a case study, so it will not only help us identify certain corridors that we can focus on for economic development, but also some redevelopment needs. We'll follow that. So we have that coming up also next year.
Brian, can you just quickly kind of get a little talk on the ULI for the public? Just a quick review.
Yes, Urban Land Institute, it's an international organization, and the Arizona chapter, and I happen to be on that advisory board, so I have an opportunity to interact with them quite a bit. They are, they actually have what they call ASTAP, where they have a technical advisory panel that comes out and looks at specific projects for you, opportunities for you. So it's a team from the development community, all associated with the Urban Land Institute Arizona chapter, who'll come out and do this work for us. But it's, they interact with the, with staff, with council, as well as they go through this. And at the end of the day, they will actually provide us with a report on opportunities in a specific area. We're primarily looking at the Bullard Avenue Road area for development opportunities and the area around the airport. So that's what we're focusing on.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kim.
Sure. We also have, the regional mall is in our strategic plan. As you know, we continue to focus on working toward providing information to Mace Rich. We just had our retail demographic study, which we have provided to Mace Rich and are even working with the consultant to mine into that data a little bit more to help them in their discussions with those anchor tenants moving toward that 2016 opening. So we remain focused on that, and we'll continue to work with Mace Rich on that information. What we are doing is keeping in contact with them, making sure that we are preparing for plan submittals. They have some obligations in their development agreement to assist with expedited plan review and inspections, and so evaluating what those needs are and making sure we're prepared once those move forward. And then also, over the next year, staff is going to be looking at a comprehensive analysis of what those operational impacts are anticipated to be when the mall opens. The development agreement hones in on public safety and what those needs might be, and there's some funding in there, some contributions from Mace Rich on additional officers. But we want to take a holistic look. So when we do incorporate revenue estimates and so forth, we're balancing out what those impacts might be to really get a good sense of what that looks like. We have planning for our key freeway corridors. As you know, we have had significant progress on the Loop 303 I-10 construction. That's going to be done fall of 2014. We also have some studies going on regarding the 303 alignment south of I-10 and evaluating those corridors. And then we've had the environmental impact survey that was done with the Bureau of Land Management for our future Sonoran Valley Parkway. So while there's no plans in the immediate future for construction of that, what we're doing is getting that environmental impact statement finalized. It'll allow us to get the right-of-way permits for that roadway, so when that is ready to move forward, we're ready to go. We don't have to wait and go through this process, which has actually been quite lengthy. So we anticipate that report to be complete by the end of this Regarding our infrastructure planning, we completed a fiber expansion plan. This was done in June. And what we did is we dovetailed that with our capital improvement plan that was adopted as part of the budget. So coordinating what those needs are, and then also leveraging dollars from the Maricopa Association of Governments to really maximize the dollars that we're investing, matching it up with their available funding to advance our fiber expansion. We also have our infrastructure improvement plan that is underway, and council just received a briefing on that. We have a draft list of projects. And what that does is those projects that are really focused on what we will need to support the growth over the next 10 years are the foundation for the establishment of our development fees. And so over the next few months, we'll have some public outreach, not only with citizens, but also with the development community. And then council will also have an opportunity early in 2014 to review that list of projects and give some policy direction on what those priorities are. Once that plan is adopted, which we have a state mandated deadline of August 2014, that also will dovetail into our capital improvement plan, which we're expanding to 10 years. And the council will have an opportunity to discuss the linkages between those two when we get into the retreat this weekend. And then the business investment and tourism efforts, we have established a partnership with ASU for the Alexandria model, which is an incubator model that will be incorporated into our new library. We also have submitted a grant to the Economic Development Authority that will possibly facilitate a future tech incubator facility, which we're very excited about. We've implemented a new business retention survey, and we also received the results from a study that was done both for spring training and non-spring training economic impacts commissioned by the Cactus League and also done by Elliot Pollak, to really show us where we have opportunities and can link into our marketing strategies to capitalize on that tourism, both for spring training and non-spring training utilization of the ballpark.
Joanne?
Something that I discovered this weekend, and I don't think we're a part of, not that I could tell, was that the Arizona Fall Ball, Volley, correct? Isn't played at our ballpark, correct?
You talk about the Centennial?
No, no. I'm talking about the, it's like the AAA guys that are close to be going ready.
Nathan's about ready to approach the microphone.
And I saw it everywhere else in the Glendale Desert Dogs, and I was like, hey. That's why I was wondering why we didn't have that.
Mayor, Councilmember Osborne, we have strategically, there currently are six Arizona Fall League teams that play throughout the city. There's 10 facilities. Some are home to two teams. But I will tell you, we have chosen strategically not to go after the Arizona Fall League, primarily because that is prime time for all of our tournament seasons. And so we, our facility is booked from October through early November, every day, multiple playing fields and multiple games in the stadium.
That's great. That's fine. I saw that.
We are strategically chosen to not pursue the Fall League and go after tournaments that bring in players from across the country.
Thank you, Nathan. Go ahead, Kim.
Just a couple other notes here regarding upcoming activities. We will be working on an update to the visitor and hotel guide in anticipation of the spring training 2014 season, continuing our partnership with Maricopa Community Colleges on workforce development programs, and then also continuing the collaboration that we've been working on with the City of Phoenix regarding the Phoenix Goodyear Airport and coordinating our investment in that area along with their master plan. So moving on to sense of community, this area really focuses on providing programs, gathering places and events where the city can come together to participate in opportunities of learning and recreation. We would focus on sustainable relationships with the community through citizen engagement, outstanding customer service, and clear accessible communication. So there's three goals here. First, we have higher education initiative, which is ongoing, the communication and connection with our neighborhoods through many different avenues, and then also our recreation and community programs and events. Our first piece is the website and mobile app application. We have been making significant progress on that. We have a new internet provider, or website provider, under contract, Vision Internet, and have launched that initiative. They'll be working with all our departments on updating that information, really streamlining what that web interface looks like. And then also, a partnership with AT&amp;T on a new mobile application that they're developing. And we're very excited to be in on the ground floor with that, because we have a lot of ability to talk to them about what our needs are and get some functionality built in there according to our needs. So we'll see those coming online next year. We also have, in the plan, a lot of focus on how are we engaging with the community area of Mobile. So we have made significant efforts in that area. Over the last six months, we had improvements to 83rd Avenue. We also piloted a new summer recreation program, established a community liaison to help us more directly communicate and get the word out about information going on not only in their area, but also citywide, and then developing our email list, so we can have some direct communication. And then upcoming, we have our Goodyear Connect site that we'll be looking for ways to expand that beyond the general plan once that process is completed. And then also our citizen satisfaction survey, which the council will be hearing about in November as far as how we're moving forward with that. Community policing efforts, several new programs in support of that initiative, our substations in local schools partnership, Coffee with a Cop, our grant for Segways, which will increase our visibility, McGruff Safety Talks. And that community policing initiative continues to be forefront with our police department, and we'll continue to look for opportunities to advance that. And then the higher education and city library expansion, as we talked about, we continue to pursue opportunities to bring additional higher education facilities to Goodyear. We have a great partnership with Franklin Pierce University, which you'll see in the plan, ways that we're expanding our interaction with them, and also continuing to pursue and do due diligence on opportunities for additional facilities. And then, of course, we have the new library facility that's under construction in the Veneta Complex here, and that will be opening in January 2014. We're very excited about that.
Quick question.
Joanne?
Thank you. Not sure exactly where this fits, but I think when I first got on council, we had a human services department of the city. And then it broke up and departments took on certain things. And, you know, it made sense. And as I, as I look at things, and especially when I see human service needs and requests at the mag level, you know, the questions come through as, what does your city do human service, you know, in that range, in that field? And I know that, you know, like, we send money to Avondale for the senior center, and I know we have Care First that we collaborate with. You know, we have some great things that are out there. I hate to use the word piecemeal, but it's here, it's here and there. And so I wonder how are we assessing, we may not need it now, but how are we assessing and what are the trigger points going to be that we finally say as a city that has, you know, 71,000 people, we're at a point that we need a human services department? Or who's assessing where we're at in that realm? Do I, am I making sense? You know what I'm saying? That it's kind of here and there, but in the big, broad range of our city, you know, it's kind of like the after-school programming that was number one in our survey. Where does that fall?
Brian, could you address that, please?
I can address it. I also think this is a great topic for the retreat this weekend. But just summarily, it was a community services department. It never really had a human service side of it. It did include things like community advocate, working with our constituents, local constituents, neighborhoods. It actually had the intergovernmental relation, similar, some similarities to what Romina is responsible for. But it didn't have a, quote, "human service" element, other than working through other providers. But I do think it's an excellent conversation for the retreat.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Kim.
So in regards to neighborhood parks enhancements and community events, we've seen some activity take place on historic Goodyear. We have a program that's called Dress for Success that really was focused on understanding what the needs were and the concerns of the residents in the historic Goodyear area, and putting together an action plan to address those. So we've seen those progress over the summer. We also have incorporated a phased approach to enhancements to the Loma Linda Park in that neighborhood. We have $250,000 allocated over five years in the CIP to phase in those, construction of those improvements. We also had Palmetier Park grand reopening after the improvements were made in that park. And then we saw some new events this year: the National Kids to Park Day, Health and Safety Expo, and also the Freedom League Baseball. So we've been incorporating those. And that really is complementing some of our staple events. We had record-breaking Fourth of July event this year. We also just had our Gain Fall Community Festival. And then upcoming, we have our Home Plate for the Holidays, and then we will be doing our Tale of Two Cities Parade again next year, early 2014. And then the public art program, we have a new public art And then, the public art program, we have a new public art specialist that's on board who's really reinvigorated that program. We saw some new initiatives, such as our sidewalk chalk art contest, our hot coffee lecture series is returning, and then also other programs like Art in Flux, which displays art around the community, and the Mayor Select Art Show. Also, we just provided the council with an update on the strategic plan that was just held with the Arts Commission that's really kind of helping them identify and prioritize what they want to be working on over the next few years. And then, staff is also working on an ordinance related to art and private development, and so you'll see that come before you for review and input early next year. Lastly, is quality of life, and we, what this focus area really is honing in on is, are we maintaining our community, establishing a clean and well-maintained community, our public safety needs, looking at codes and initiatives that provide a sustainable community, and then also opportunities for our citizens to have quality opportunities for an engaged and healthy lifestyle. So, you'll see here that some of the goals we've established are creating innovative and efficient public safety programs, really getting at the diverse programs that we offer to our citizens, partnerships that we can foster development of our youth in the community, and then environmentally conscious initiatives that support that clean, well-maintained, and sustainable community. So, first, we'll talk about community partnerships that focus on this excellent quality of life. This gets at a little bit of what Councilmember Osborne was just talking about and some of those initiatives that we have in place. We have the community funding, and we awarded $117,000 in grants this fiscal year to nonprofits around the community to provide those services that our citizens need. We also, in support of our youth development, have pursued and received designation from the Arizona Literacy Foundation as a Read On City, and that was really supported by our successful inaugural citywide reading challenge. We also have formalized a partnership with Benavia for a grocery shopping program for our residents, and they actually have space that they use for their staff and city hall to help facilitate that program. And so, upcoming, what you'll see is our annual building block summit, which is really bringing together those educational partners to the table, talking about what the needs are, and then the next rendition of our reading challenge. And then, also, we are, we've retooled our youth commission program, really trying to focus on leadership development, and then also teaching them about municipal government, and this also dovetails into our succession planning efforts. So, learning about city departments, what opportunities there are for public service, and engaging with our directors to hopefully ignite a passion for them for municipal service. And then, our environmentally conscious initiatives, we have our new Age 2 Own It Water Conservation Program that was just launched. We just had Make a Difference Day over this past weekend, which really focuses on bringing the community volunteers together to beautify and enhance our community. And then, we also reorganized our code enforcement division in an effort to bolster our proactive approach and also have more people out in the field so we can identify areas sooner. And then, we have our Transit Circulator Plan Development, which is an action item that we are evaluating in our plan. As you know, we had the Maricopa Association of Governments that looked at the Southwest Study, and staff has been evaluating those results, which were presented back in March, and is going to be providing a yellow paper to the council this week, talking about the history of that, and then also, what do we need to do moving forward to continue to advance discussions on how we could look at a strategy to implement a program. So, along with the yellow paper that the council will be receiving, we will be having a work session in the January, December, January timeframe to really focus in on some policy discussions of what the council would like to see in that type of plan. And then, finally, in the public safety area, we saw a comprehensive action plan that was developed to address the fire management needs assessment, and specifically some enhancements that were implemented in the fire prevention area, really a main focus area, and then also standardization of our response time performance measures. We also had the police department initiate the accreditation process, as we talked about earlier, looking at their policies and procedures, and they were able to do that, looking at their existing resources. So, it's a two-and-a-half-year process, but they were able to utilize existing resources to get that going right away. So, quickly, just some next steps. As Brian alluded to, we are going to be talking with the council at the retreat this weekend about what are some new things that you'd like us to evaluate for the fiscal year 14-17 update of the plan? So, while we're making a lot of progress and we've completed some items in the plan as it was adopted, we'll be looking for some input on what you'd like us to evaluate that we'll bring back as part of the budget process, so we can look at what resources may be needed and prioritize what gets in the update of the plan that'll be adopted next year.
Yes, Brian?
Yes, and thank you very much, Kim. A lot of information. You can see there's a lot of activity. I just wanted to, for the public, this is a three-year strategic action plan. This is six months into that strategic action plan. There's been a tremendous amount of work, very appreciative of staff's efforts. They really worked hard to get it to this point. And as Kim pointed out, it is an opportunity to look at how this might be tweaked, because it is a dynamic plan. We know that it will change over time, and certainly, your input this weekend will be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Kim, that was an excellent presentation, really.
Thank you.
Printed and delivered tonight, so I really thank you very much for all your work on this project. Thank you. All right, we're kind of going to be in a hurry here, so, 6 o'clock.